Good afternoon, I'm Sue Thomas, President of City Club, and I welcome you all. Those of you here at the Governor Hotel and those of you listening on OPB or KPPS radio or watching on Portland Community Media's CityNet 30. Thank you for joining City Club today on Friday, April 23rd, for the City Council Seat Number Three Debate. As we begin, I'd like to offer our appreciation to our Friday Forum corporate sponsors, without whose generous financial support these time-honored City Club luncheons would not be possible. Please join me in thanking our sponsors Key Private Bank, Northwest Natural, and Schwab Williamson &amp; Wyatt. We appreciate your support. And now to introduce today's debate moderator. Corleen Kraft has been a City Club member for over 20 years. She has participated in two research studies and chaired the Friday Forum Committee. She was City Club President from 2004 to 2005 and is currently a real estate broker for the Hassan Company Realtors. Corleen?
Nice to see you all. It's my privilege today to get to introduce and moderate the race for Commission Seat Number Three. Oh, and it's going to require some glasses. The three debaters today will be incumbent Dan Saltzman and challengers Mary Volm and Jesse Cornett. Now, the debate will have several sections. First, each candidate will give a three-minute opening statement in a previously determined random order. Following the opening statement, candidates will respond to questions written in advance by City Club's Friday Forum Committee and City Club staff. These are the only questions that will be asked today, there will be no questions from the floor. Now, as you all know, City Club has exacting standards for answers, and we have experienced listeners over here who will judge whether the question has been answered accurately. Therefore, we'll rely on their judgment of this distinguished panel of City Club members seated at the table in front of me to decide whether or not the questions have indeed been answered. If two or more of these members raise their question mark cards -- do I raise them so everybody can see? Thank you. Because they believe a question has not been answered, I'll restate the question and ask the candidate to reply again. On our panel, we have Breann Arnold, Jean Hart, and Leslie Moorhead. And keeping time today is Elaine McCall. And for those of you who always sit back there, I've wondered this myself, there's a gigantic time clock right here, so no excuses. Following City Club's questions, each candidate will have an opportunity to ask one question of another candidate. And after this rotation of questions, each candidate will make a two-minute closing statement. So, candidates, if you wish to avoid the ignominy of having the question marks raised, please try to answer what is asked, and we'll notice if you deliberately misstate it so that you get more time. Bad points. So, I ask you all to please be respectful of the candidates, and please hold all applause until the end of the program. And now the candidates. Dan Saltzman. Our first debater is Dan Saltzman. Mr. Saltzman's political career has included a staff position with U.S. Senator Ron Wyden in Washington, D.C., five years as a Multnomah County Commissioner, and his current role as a City of Portland Commissioner since 1998. In his time with the City of Portland, Mr. Saltzman has been the Commissioner in charge of nine city bureaus, including management of the Portland Police Bureau, the Fire and Police Disability and Retirement System, the Portland Children's Levy, and the Bureau of Environmental Services. Our second debater today is Mary Volm. Over the past 20 years, Ms. Volm worked as the Communications Director for a variety of the City of Portland bureaus, where she covered issues ranging from transportation to the city's budget. She's a well-known face for her role as the city's spokesperson during major weather-related events. And prior to joining the City of Portland, Mary worked for the State of Oregon in Economic Development and Transportation, where she led communication efforts to attract tourists and new business to the state. And our third debater today is Jesse Cornett. Mr. Cornett most recently served as the Government Relations Director and Assistant to the President of Portland State University, where he worked to secure federal funding for university projects. He previously worked in Salem for then-State Representative Steve March and as a District Assistant for Congressman Earl Blumenauer. He began his career working for Oregon Secretary of State Bill Bradbury. Now, if I could please invite the candidates to the podium. Each of them will have three minutes for an opening statement. Mr. Saltzman, will you please begin?
May I begin?
I'm sorry.
Am I beginning?
You're up.
Oh, okay.
You're on.
Great. Well, thank you, City Club, for hosting this debate, and I also want to acknowledge the three most important women in my life: my mother, Marge, my girlfriend Liz Burns, and my daughter Adrienne. The last time I spoke at the City Club, I talked about my background as an environmental engineer as being the source of my famous charisma. You laughed. I'm still working on my therapist to figure out why. I know that I'm not a typical elected official. I don't pound a table, I don't spend time focusing on the politics of a situation, I spend time working the problem. And in fact, I think the record shows that I've become the go-to Commissioner when it comes to solving the most difficult situations that come our way. When the Water Bureau billing system imploded, costing us millions, Mayor Katz put me in charge, and I fixed it. For decades, the Fire Police Disability and Retirement Fund was the third rail of Portland politics. It's hard to imagine a more boring issue or a more dangerous one. Left unaddressed, its unfunded pension liability would literally have swallowed the city's budget whole. And the fox is no longer guarding the hen house when it comes to disability payments. I took it on, and I fixed it, with the outstanding support of the City Club and 82 percent of Portland voters. I also manage the Big Pipe Project, the largest public works project in Portland's history, and I'm bringing it in on time and on budget and creating 5,500 good-paying jobs in the process. Of course, all of this wisdom and experience has been taxed to its limit in my newest assignment as Police Commissioner. I knew it was a tough job when I took it, and recent events have certainly borne that out. Under my leadership, we are changing policy, training, and practices around the use of force, the interaction with the mentally ill, and restoring trust between the Bureau and the community. Some have faulted me for not playing all this up more in the media. Well, I would rather make positive change than chase headlines. So, what I've described are some of the challenges that have come my way, but my true passion is working on, focusing on the voices that are not heard: survivors of domestic violence, children who are abused and neglected, who live in poverty and desperately need someone to believe in them so they can begin to believe in themselves. And that's why I'm proud to have created the Children's Levy, and with your support, we've renewed it twice. So, yes, it's true, I'm not flashy, but I am a strong, independent leader who understands the needs of Portland's families and keeps a sharp eye on the bottom line. I think that's a skill set worth keeping on the City Council. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Volm, your opening statement, three minutes, please.
Thank you. As you heard, I have 24 years of public service experience in both the city and the state in a variety of things, and you know, sometimes flattery is often the, sometimes imitation is often the best compliment that one can get, so thank you, Dan. It's clear you've been reading my campaign material, because during my 20 years, I have been the go-to girl, working on a variety of major projects, including the water billing system, and I think you remember that. I am in this race for some very specific reasons. I was born here, and let me introduce my son, who is now a wonderful attorney here in Portland, Oregon, and I care about this place. And I am deeply concerned with the fact that so many Portlanders are out of work. I have the economic development experience, actually working for the state during the recovery of the trickle-down recession that we went through in the late 1980s. And we need to be very, very smart about the way in which we attract business here. PDC has been working hard, but its comprehensive plan is not comprehensive enough. We need to diversify our economy, and to do that, we need to look at what businesses are emerging in this country, what businesses are likely to start up, and specifically target those businesses and attract them, and I say court them, because that's what it takes. We have a lot to offer here in Portland, Oregon, and I know how to do that. Secondly, the way we get people back to work or actually keeping their jobs is to keep Portland's business community strong. And I don't know when the city got so greedy, but over the last four or five years, we've seen incredible increases in fees and charges, SDCs, licenses, and taxes, that I've talked to several business owners that have to either close their doors or move out just outside the city, and they're saving upwards of $40,000 a year. If we're going to put people back to work, the city must have its hand on the back of our business community. And I say that we can do that by not taxing first and expecting results later. The third reason I'm in, or the second reason I'm in this race is that I believe we need to get back to the basics. Call me a maintenance girl, if you will, I know it's not very sexy, but we have turned our back on the billions of dollars of investment that U.S. citizens have made in this great city. We have 600 miles of deferred maintenance on our streets, we have parks that are crumbling, community centers and parks that need absolute attention for maintenance, and I've watched it over the years as pet projects take that maintenance money. So, I say I can bring back some true common sense to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, three minutes for you, Mr. Cornett, for your opening statement.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Jesse Cornett. I'm running for the Portland City Council because of what's right with Portland, what's wrong with Portland, and collectively, what we can do to move Portland forward. How do we do that? Job creation, the wiser use of taxpayer dollars, and safer neighborhoods. As someone who grew up the son of a plumber and a waitress, I know the importance of making sure everyone has a job, because I've lived in a household facing the impacts of not. As a staffer for Congressman Blumenauer, I worked, conducted business outreach, working with local businesses to make sure that they had the support they needed to succeed. As the Government Relations Director for Portland State University, I was proud to have worked with the state and federal government to bring millions of dollars to needed construction projects to campus that created living wage jobs that exist to this day. As your City Commissioner, I'll practice what I preach. We're going to shop local, we're going to bank local instead of multinationals, folks that are as interested in investing in Kenton as they are Topeka. I'm going to make sure the city, for the first time, is a true partner with the state and federal government to make sure that we're maximizing funds that exist for energy efficiency improvements, because we have the trained workers that can be on the job today for those jobs. Third, when necessary, we have to look at the fees that our small businesses are paying. They're struggling as a result, and we have to consider lowering those in the short term to help our economy for the long term. Second, on the wise use of tax and ratepayer dollars, despite catchy campaign slogans, nobody in City Hall has paid attention to the bottom line. I grew up without much, I was the first college graduate in my family, and I've always had to watch every penny, from corporate giveaways to cost overruns. Spending money in ways that vex Portlanders, we have to do better. And we can't keep spending more while getting less. Finally, we have to keep improving our neighborhoods. Working with the county, state, and feds, we have to address the mental health crisis that's negatively impacting every neighborhood in Portland right now. We have to get back to the roots of community policing. As a former Reserve Deputy Sheriff, I've been through the police academy, I've served in uniform, and I understand the needs in that area. Finally, we have to make sure we improve the infrastructure throughout Portland so kids have sidewalks to walk on so they can get to school safely, so the elderly can get to the store to get groceries. There are large swaths of Portland that lack basic sidewalks and paved roads. Through helping launch the political website BlueOregon.com and the Oregon Bus Project, I've worked to open the doors of government, and I'm going to do the same thing at City Hall, so we can indeed move Portland forward. Thank you.
Thank you, all three. We'll now move to the portion of the program where I will ask the questions that have been prepared by the Friday Forum Committee and by City Club staff. The candidates have not seen these questions in advance. I'm going to open with a question directed solely to one candidate, who will have 60 seconds to answer, and there will be no rebuttals. Jesse Cornett will offer our first response. Mr. Cornett, the incumbent City Council member who you want to replace has private sector experience, a rarity in local government. The city arguably benefits from an effective and close relationship with its business community. Exactly what credentials do you have that will allow you to collaborate with the city's business partners and relate to their legitimate needs and concerns?
Thank you. My experience, I'm trained, I have a master's in public administration. From my experience working with Congressman Blumenauer's office, I developed an intense interest in making sure that we're supporting local businesses, and I understand the needs of many local struggling small businesses. I'm proud that, as I was graduating college, I could have chosen any profession that I wanted, and despite my long experience working in the restaurant industry and having managed a restaurant as a 20/21-year-old, that I chose to use my skills and experience in the public sector. Yet, as a, with my background, I have a keen understanding of the needs of businesses beyond platitudes and making sure that we're helping all of Portland's businesses, especially those east of 82nd in my neighborhood where they're struggling.
Next question goes to Ms. Volm. You've been an outspoken critic of Mayor Sam Adams over the past year, and even volunteered as a spokeswoman for the first Adams recall campaign. If elected, how would you, your apparently contentious relationship with the mayor impact your ability to be an effective Commissioner?
Thank you for that opportunity. I have known Sam Adams for 16 years and actually was one of his dearest friends when he was at City Hall. I was his go-to girl for 10 years, oftentimes being tapped to work on some of the most important projects for Mayor Vera Katz, including Neighbor Safe and writing State of the City and Budget speeches with him. This is not personal. This is not personal. This is about our city, and as long as he and I both agree that we're working for the benefit of the citizens of Portland, I don't see any problem working directly with Sam. I've got more experience than anyone else. Thank you.
Next question to Mr. Saltzman. The City Council recently approved a plan by Mayor Sam Adams to use $20 million in sewer funds to essentially improve bicycle infrastructure. The Oregonian reports that $12.4 million of this would come from delaying capital projects, such as fixing leaky pipes before they fail. With Portland residents already paying some of the highest sewer rates in the country, how do you defend your vote to support the mayor's proposal?
Well, thank you for that question. Excuse me. And let me be very clear on the sewer issue. Under my leadership, sewer money will be used and spent on sewer projects. To say money is being diverted is simply not true. What I voted for, and what I will be doing as the Commissioner in charge of the Bureau of Environmental Services, is to ensure that when we rip up a street for a sewer project to relieve basement flooding or to improve a green street, when we put it back together, we'll do it in a way that matches up with the Portland Bike Plan. It just makes sense, it's a twofer, and I think this is what Portland, it will make Portland safer for bikers, and I think it just makes sense to do it that way.
Thank you. I'm now going to direct questions to one candidate, who will have 60 seconds to respond, and then opposing candidates will have the option of a 45-second rebuttal. We encourage candidate rebuttals of each other's remarks as well as responses to the question. The first question will go to Mr. Cornett. The collective bargaining history between the city and the police bureau has resulted in a number of conflicts that have made headlines. Among them, disputes over disability payments, interrogation of officers following shooting incidents, and discipline by the Commissioner who oversees the Bureau. What changes, if any, would you promote in the collective bargaining agreement between the city and police bureau?
Thank you, that's a very good question. To this point, I believe I'm the first candidate who's put together a comprehensive plan for reforming the police bureau, which can be found on my website, and it covers a range of issues, from making sure that we're recruiting officers that better reflect the citizens that they're hired to represent, making sure we're providing them the initial and ongoing training necessary to do their jobs, getting back to the roots of community policing, and holding them accountable in the rare cases when there's an error on the job. But to answer the question specifically, what changes can we push for in collective bargaining? I think everyone in this room and everyone listening in should be frightened that we have 1,000 people who are on the street authorized to take a life should the situation warrant it, yet the city requires no ongoing performance reviews. And as somebody at the bargaining table, that would be the number-one thing that I would push for. Second, we should actually provide an additional ability for drug testing in necessary cases for Portland police.
Thank you. You each will now have a 45-second rebuttal. Ms. Volm, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. Jesse, I am very, very concerned that there is a undercurrent of retaliation in your interest in governing the police bureau, because you've stated many times that your friend was shot by a Portland police officer. For me, that's no way to govern. I am very concerned that, in all honesty, you want to get in there and shake some things loose in a way that is more retaliatory rather than beneficial to the entire community.
Mr. Saltzman, you have the option of a 45-second rebuttal as well?
Sure. Well, I'll tell you the things that I am pushing for in the collective bargaining agreement. In the vein of increasing the transparency and accountability of the police bureau, the City Council several weeks ago approves a major overhaul to improve the authority of the Office of the Independent Police Review. Some of those changes that we passed will require bargaining with the police union, so those are on the table. Secondly, I'm pushing for drug testing of our police officers, including steroids. And thirdly, I'm pushing for annual performance reviews of all officers to be done once a year, annually.
Thank you. Next question will go to Ms. Volm. Several of Portland's "sit lie" ordinances, which prevent homeless people from obstructing sidewalks in business districts, have been declared unconstitutional. Mayor Adams recently proposed a broader plan that attempts to deal with all sidewalk users. Though untested, this proposal is already being criticized by merchants for not being sufficiently strong, and by homeless advocates as avoiding the underlying issues that cause homelessness. How would you propose resolving the tensions between downtown businesses and Portland's homeless population?
Thank you. I believe we have three distinct types of homelessness in our city. The first are truly the homeless that want to have a home, that want to be productive members of society. And in that group, there are some that have been homeless for quite some time and will need extra help in job training and assistance in getting back on their feet. The second group is the one that concerns me the most, and it's our mentally ill. We are going back to a model that we used in the late 1800s of crime and punishment. We, I believe that the mentally ill can be productive members of our society if they have the assistance that they need, promised by the state. The third are transient kids, and we need to figure out a way we can help them either get on their feet or find a new place to live. But living on our streets with their pit bull on a long chain is not anything that benefits any of us, including themselves.
Well, we have three question marks. Let me repeat the last part of the question. How would you propose resolving the tensions between downtown businesses and Portland's homeless population?
We run out of time so quickly, and my fault. The way I would resolve it, we have so many organizations that assist people, but we're not really working together to address this issue as a holistic problem. And how I would propose to go about it is to work with the mentally, the mental health industry for the mentally ill. For those that are homeless, we've got housing opportunities, but we need much more money, and I would work on council to ensure that in those development agreements, we actually keep our promise and build low-income housing. And on the third point, we need to identify these kids, find out where they've come from, and really help them either become productive members of society or help them find another place to live.
Thank you. Mr. Saltzman, you have an option of a 45-second rebuttal.
Well, as you mentioned, the "sit lie" ordinance has been ruled unconstitutional. Mayor Adams and Commissioner Amanda Fritz have been working on a new sidewalk management plan, which I support, which will establish some parameters associated with Americans for Disability Access requirements that should solve the problem, although I don't believe it's going to solve the problem in totality. The Portland Children's Levy, for instance, is another angle to solve the problem. We support new avenues for youth, Janus Youth Programs, and others that are working with the young homeless individuals. And third, for sort of the category, the road warriors, you know, what we need is simple, old-fashioned more enforcement. And last summer, and this summer again, the police will be doing enforcement. If they see a crime being committed, they will make an arrest and prosecute.
Thank you. Mr. Cornett, would you like to rebut 45 seconds?
Yes. I look forward to working with the City Council's leader on homelessness and housing issues, Commissioner Fish, to make sure that we find a solution that's a little bit more compassionate than sending people home or somewhere else that doesn't solve the problem, that doesn't solve anything. Compassionate solutions that are taking care of the issues at hand, which would include, at the very least, making sure that we pass a vibrant housing levy that has significant funding included to house the mentally ill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question will go to Mr. Saltzman. There used to be a clear division of services between the City of Portland, Portland Public Schools, and Multnomah County. Recently, these lines have become blurred, as the city becomes involved in financially supporting the school districts within city limits, and has even considered the idea of taking over the city's bridges. Do you support a boundary between the activities of these government bodies, or should the city continue to expand its role?
Well, I don't, you know, I support boundaries, but I also don't support boundaries as an excuse for doing nothing. And too often, when it comes to issues around mental illness, around children, we have finger pointing going on, saying that's a state responsibility, that's a county responsibility, that's a city responsibility. I think, having served on the county commission and now serving on the City Council, I'm probably guilty of blurring those distinctions by putting forward things such as the Portland Children's Levy. But our Portland, you know, our children in Portland need assistance, and the Children's Levy is helping over 16,000 of Portland's neediest children succeed, get an equal shot at success in life. Now, some argue that should be a county distinct, that should be a county responsibility, and in an ideal world, it should. But in the real world, this was passed by Portland voters, and strategically, it showed the Portland voters would approve it. So, yes, I'm guilty of blurring the distinctions, and I'm proud to do that where it makes sense in my mind, and I think others, like Portland voters, agree.
Thank you, Mr. Saltzman. Mr. Cornett, you have the option of a 45-second rebuttal. All right, Ms. Volm, would you like to rebut?
No.
All right, moving along then, the next question goes to Mr. Cornett. Portland is often lauded as one of America's great cities, but many local observers think that those at the helm of this city, the mayor and City Council, are not providing the kind of leadership and direction this city needs and deserves. From internal squabbling to unfocused spending decisions, to a distracted mayor, city government seems to be below par. What exactly do you bring to the table that is different from what we have now, and how would that improve city governance?
If we're going to move Portland forward, we actually have to change the tenor in City Hall. You have a City Hall that's full of Commissioners who act like the only way to communicate is through sending out press releases or talking to the media. The first thing that I would do is I would familiarize myself with walking across the second floor to get to my colleagues' offices, talking to them about issues. second floor to get to my colleagues' offices, talking to them about issues of concern as ongoing of a basis as necessary to make sure that we don't approach the dangerous points we've been at recently. There have been distractions in the city and squabbling, and I think simply working closer together would make a big difference.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Well, ding ding ding. They say you didn't quite answer the question. Let me just repeat the last of it. What exactly do you bring to the table that is different from what we have now, and how would that improve city governance?
I bring somebody that has a decade of experience working in politics and government, working to pass positive policy for our state, working to get resources here to Portland to improve the infrastructure of Portland State. I bring somebody who's willing to work across party lines regardless of any political affiliation and compromise where necessary. I have a style that would lead me to introduce any and every piece of legislation or amendment in advance of the moment that I walk into the City Council chamber for which there's a hearing. So my colleagues have a chance to consider it, and the public has a chance to consider it. And that would be a big step forward, and that would be something that I would change immediately.
Thank you. Ms. Volm, pardon me, Ms. Volm, you now have the option of a 45-second rebuttal.
I'm sorry?
You have, you may rebut a 45-second rebuttal.
Yes. Jesse, I'm concerned that you really haven't had any experience at the City with regards to all the responsibilities that are there. So as you're working across the table, there are more experienced people on City Council that like to make deals and like to make sure that their things are passed. I'm concerned that without your experience, without any real city experience on the ground, how would you be able to communicate and actually add to a conversation that furthers a proposal, maybe even broadens it?
And Mr. Saltzman, a rebuttal?
Well, you know, one person's definition of squabbling is another person's definition of democracy. And if we were all voting five-zero all the time, I guess I'd be wondering about the health of our City Council. We do have debates, and they're healthy debates, and that's what being in the public sector is all about. I pride myself in working well with all four of my colleagues, and I think they're all passionate, strong people. Each brings a different set of priorities to the table. Our job is to meld those priorities and to make the city run well. And I think there's a lot of rhetoric how the city is not working well. I think we should remember a couple things. The city is in a very sound financial position. We have AAA bond ratings, we have very healthy reserves. So there's a lot of political rhetoric about the city falling apart, but I think, you know, when you separate sort of the political gain side of that argument, the reality shows otherwise.
The next question goes to Ms. Volm. The Portland metropolitan area is not keeping up with competitor regions when it comes to wage growth. Cities like Seattle, Austin, and Denver have been, have seen dramatic increases in average per capita income over the past 50 years. Portland's average income, on the other hand, has remained flat. What can be done to increase the availability of good-paying jobs?
Thank you for that question, and it's what I started to speak to in my opening statement, and that is, we need a diverse economy. I've heard a lot of discussion about green industry, and it was just a month and a half ago, right here in this hall, where we heard from two economists that said every municipality is going after green industry. We need light manufacturing, we need a diverse approach so that we can get Portlanders back to work. My concern is that we're waiting for the economy to get better instead of being out there in front, working directly with businesses who are looking for a new place to locate, looking for a West Coast outlet. We are perfectly positioned here. Location, 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 and we have a trained workforce, yet we're not going out after those businesses that we have identified as willing to move or willing to expand.
Well, I'm sorry, we have two question marks on that one. The question again...
I honestly cannot hear.
Yeah, we have...
He's having trouble too. We're really having a hard time hearing the question.
Well, we have our trusty sound guy. As we speak, our sound guy. Or I could just yell.
Could you yell it?
Yeah.
That would be great. I'll come over.
Okay. Well, the bottom-line question is, what can be done to increase the availability of good-paying jobs?
As I said, government does not create jobs, but we create the climate that attracts jobs, attracts businesses that are willing to employ people that live right here. Government can't create jobs. I guess we could if we added a whole bunch of new jobs to the city, but I don't think the public would like that very much. What I do believe is that we need to aggressively go after businesses that are looking to expand. We are perfectly located here on the Pacific Rim. We have an international port and airport, and we have a lot to offer in terms of quality of life. The only thing we've slipped on is our education, K through 12. Other than that, though, we have a lot to compete with, and I say we need to go out after those businesses, those emerging businesses that are looking for a new location.
Thank you. Mr. Saltzman, would you like to have a 45-second rebuttal?
Yes. One of the things that the City is focused on is an economic development strategy that we believe builds on the strengths of what we have in our city. Those four key strategies that we're focusing on are, first of all, manufacturing. You know, we have a lot of good-paying manufacturing jobs in this city. Secondly is software development. This is an area where we have a lot of strengths. Third is footwear and apparel industry. I think you all know we have strengths in that area. And the fourth area, which I've worked hard to establish, is the whole clean energy, green building area. And this is an area that used to be looked at askance as really, are there jobs there? I think we're seeing with things like the location of Solar World in Hillsborough, which has the potential to be the next Intel, we're starting to reap the rewards of having a good reputation and working hard to get these jobs here.
Thank you. Mr. Cornet?
Thank you. I think the City can continue to build its partnerships with Portland Community College, Portland State, and the variety of private colleges in the area to build the high-quality workforce business needs if they're going to locate in our region. Number two, on the economic development plan that the City has had, what we're doing is we're really investing our time and effort in the industries that already exist here, and I'm not sure that's the best strategy. If you look at the list of top 10 businesses in the Portland area 40 years ago, it included timber companies. There's zero overlap with the list of 40 business, the top 10 businesses that are here today, where we have companies such as Intel, who are making products that we couldn't have even imagined 40 years ago. So what we need to do is we need to find a way to place a lot of small bets on local entrepreneurs have their, who have their own skin in the game.
Thank you. The next question goes to Mr. Saltzman. A recent guest editorial in The Oregonian lamented what seems to be the impending departure of the Beavers, Portland's minor league baseball team, as the city helps renovate PGE Park for Major League Soccer. The editorial noted that the city seems to be more interested in, quote, "marketing its European image" than supporting the mainstream and largely middle-class Beavers baseball fans who couldn't keep Portland weird if their lives depended on it. Are you concerned about the potential loss of the Portland Beavers? And if so, what should the city be doing to keep the team here?
Well, I have no choice but to be worried about the loss of the Beavers. My Uncle Harold is a former Beaver, and he calls me up all the time on this issue. You know, we worked hard, and we're still working. We haven't given up on the Portland Beavers. You know, we are working hard. I know Mayor Paulson is working hard. He wants to keep them in this area, whether it's Portland or the surrounding environment. So we're not giving up yet. But, you know, I do think Major League Soccer is another Major League sports franchise. Sports franchises, I think, help bind the city in many ways, as we watch right now in the Blazers, how the city comes together behind its sports teams. So I do support the Major League Soccer team. I also assured that no urban renewal dollars would be used in it, and no general fund dollars would be used in that deal. And, you know, it's not every day you get a family that steps up and wants to invest $21, $22 million of their own money to make Major League Soccer a reality. So, as I said, we haven't given up on the Beavers yet.
Mr. Cornet, would you like to have a 45 seconds for a rebuttal?
Yes, thank you. When Commissioner Saltzman provided the critical third vote to bring Major League Soccer to Portland, he should have made sure that retaining the Beavers in the deal was included. It wasn't, nobody's talked about it since, and as a result, I fear that we are indeed going to lose the Beavers for good. They have a long, successful history in Portland, and just cutting them loose so easily to go after the next big, new shiny thing is all too emblematic of what's happening in City Hall right now. In addition to that, the soccer deal included far too much risk for Portland taxpayers and shouldn't have contained subsidies for the Paulson family to pay their workers a fair wage.
Thank you. Ms. Volm?
Yes, thank you. I was there when we opened PGE Park about nine years ago. Gorgeous facility, and we are still bonded for another 16 years at a million dollars a year, over a million dollars a year to pay that bond back. On top of it, we're going to go another $12 million. And you can say that Mr. Paulson will totally guarantee that, but I worked for the Portland Timbers when they were the NASL team, and I can tell you how quickly a league can go under. I am very concerned that we are losing the Beavers. It's our oldest sports club, and we're going to lose a family, an affordable family, recreational opportunity that we won't ever be able to regain again.
Thank you. We have time for one brief bonus question, and it will be directed to all three candidates. Portland has been accused of being unfriendly towards business. Critics point to high taxes, a building bureau that is unfriendly to growth, and a lack of support of existing Portland businesses. Is this a bum rap, or are we truly failing to provide a climate that can encourage business development within the city? Mr. Cornet, your response, and you have 60 seconds.
And the question itself, I couldn't hear.
Portland's been accused of being unfriendly toward business. Is this a bum rap, or are we truly failing to provide a climate that can encourage business development within the city?
Thank you, much clearer that time. I would say that we're somewhere in the middle right now. What we have are ambassadors, the entrenched downtown business interests, who are willing to go out and spread the word to the state and the whole world that we're not a good place to do business. But most of the small business owners I've interfaced with in my, in my race have not indicated any high level of dissatisfaction with the city. So as City Councilors, as City Commissioners, we should be ambassadors for making sure we're talking about what it is the City is doing right, and talking about our relatively low interest rates, or, excuse me, relatively low tax rates compared to other jurisdictions. So I'm right in the middle. There perhaps is some truth to it, but for the most part, it's a lack of cheerleading on what we are doing right.
Thank you. Ms. Volm, 60 seconds.
I don't think we can cheerlead our way out of this problem. I have been around to every business in my specific business community and all over this city, and I'm hearing over and over, they cannot afford to stay in Portland. It is very, very difficult when the fees permits, system development charges, licenses, and then an income tax that helps us get through another three-year period. We're driving businesses out of Portland, and there are businesses that have their clients here, they want to stay here, but they can't afford it. My doctor moved out. He was building a gorgeous day surgery center, sleep clinic, all this. He is just on the other side of Portland city limits because it costs him $40,000 less a year to do business there. We need to stop taxing ahead of the benefit that they, they'll bring taxes to us if we have a healthy business economy.
Thank you. Mr. Saltzman, 60 seconds.
Well, I think there's a pretty strong negativity on the part of many businesses towards the City of Portland right now. And it's not just the fact that the City of Portland has a business license fee, which no other city in the state has, but it's also, quite frankly, the passage of Measure 66 and 67 has really embittered many people in the business community towards doing business in Oregon. I think, you know, our business license fee is the second or third largest source of general fund revenues. So we've reformed it, we've made it less onerous on businesses, we've raised the deduction limit for paying it at all, but I'm not going to sit here and say it's going to go away. And so that's one innocence incentive, I think, as Mary just mentioned, when people move just across the line. And so we have to work hard to make Portland a business-friendly environment, but I know there's a lot of people who are very happy in doing business in Portland and would think of doing it nowhere else.
Thank you. We now move to the portion of the program where each candidate will have the opportunity to ask one other candidate a question. Questions must be asked in 30 seconds. The candidate to whom the question is directed will have one minute to respond, after which the questioner will have the option of a 30-second rebuttal. We'll begin with Ms. Volm.
Thank you, and I can ask either one, or I...
Correct, you can ask just one.
Just one, okay.
And you have 30 seconds to ask, and the person will have 60 seconds to respond.
Well, Dan, I've beat up too much on you lately, so I'm going to ask Jesse. Jesse, I'm very, very concerned about your statements by local when you've been given by all of us here in this room, as long as you're a city resident, money to run a campaign, and you have constantly purchased services outside of this state. You told me we don't have any political consultants in this state, nor do we have any polling firms or printing firms. I'm very concerned. Is that the way you'd run the city budget?
And Mr. Cornet, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you so much. I'm concerned that Mary is so concerned about the way I'm running my campaign, actually. It's true, I'll admit it. I hired the best pollster I could find on the West Coast who was available to work for my campaign. I'm proud of that. You hire any local pollster, oh, guess what? They're going to use an out-of-town call center anyway. I practice what I preach. You get knocked one way for doing one thing, it's abundantly clear how I'm running my campaign. I'm hiring a lot of registered voters in Portland, 25, to walk around and talk to Portlanders about the importance of the issues facing City Hall. So I'm the only candidate on the podium that's actually created jobs in Portland right now. I'm the only person that's actually put the effort in. So, yeah, I practice what I preach, and I keep my money local whenever possible.
Ms. Volm, you have the option of a 30-second rebuttal.
Well, I do appreciate you hiring some people to talk about City Hall rather than people that actually want to volunteer for your campaign and talk to the residents in this community about the things that concern them. By paying somebody to go out and spread your message rather than asking your bus project friends, it seems a little disingenuous that you're actually running a campaign that I'm envious of. I would say, Jesse, do buy local. It's important that the people that are in business stay in business here.
So, Mr. Cornet, you now have the opportunity to ask one of the other candidates a question in 30 seconds, and they will have the opportunity to rebut it.
Thank you. My question is of Commissioner Saltzman. You referenced the word failure earlier, and that piqued my interest, and was along the lines of what I wanted to ask you about. You have a long, commendable career in City Hall, and you've talked a lot about the things that you see as your biggest successes. Will you talk for just a minute about what you consider your greatest failures during your 12-year stint as a City Commissioner?
I think some of my greatest failures are perhaps, as I said, I'm not the most charismatic person in the world, and sometimes that can, you know, that's part of leadership is being, having some charisma. I work hard to overcompensate for that. I'm a forced extrovert. Secondly, I think one of the things I do regret was that I worked along with County Commissioner Jeff Cogan to open the Children's Receiving Center, which is a place where children who are abused and neglected can be taken to right away a home-like environment rather than riding around in the back of a police officer's car or sitting at a caseworker's desk for hours on end until a placement is found. The Children's Receiving Center opened, but it closed five years ago, or five years later, and I'm profoundly remorseful about that. I am glad to say, though, that in the spirit of reuse and recycling, the Children's Receiving Center is now going to be the home of the city's one-stop domestic violence center that will be opening this summer at 102nd and East Burnside. And once again, I'm partnering with County Chair Jeff Cogan on this project.
Mr. Cornet, you have 30 seconds to rebut.
I'll just simply say thank you for that. I know that a lot of these forums that we've had have been contentious, and I would like to take this opportunity to commend you for the great work you have done, so.
Mr. Saltzman, you have the opportunity now for a question of either of the other two candidates. Please keep it to 30 seconds.
Well, I guess I'll ask this of Jesse. You and others have attacked the City Council for funding pet projects. Here are some of my pet projects. The Children's Levy, the Office of Sustainable... The Children's Levy, the Office of Sustainable Development, a pillar of our efforts to restart the economy, the one-stop domestic violence center, the child pornography task force, and the first community pool to be built east of I-205. So I'd like to know which of any of those is a bad idea, we shouldn't have done, or alternatively, how would you have made it happen in a different way?
Mr. Cornet, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you for that good question. Actually, Commissioner, when I refer to pet projects, I'm actually referring to pet projects, and I have granted that you have done some great things in City Hall. I do like that you highlight the Children's Levy as your greatest accomplishment there. Far from a pet project, that's something that every Portlander had a chance to vote on and supported. So hardly a pet project. When I talk about a pet project, I'm talking about the soccer stadium, for instance. We could take it a little bit further. 29 seconds isn't enough time for the nuance of, we need green streets in Portland. We need bicycle infrastructure improvements. But when you suddenly mix those together mid-budget cycle, what you do is you vex voters, and you get green streets where you need bike lanes, not where you need green streets. And that's an unfortunate downside, and definitely a pet project.
Thank you. Mr. Saltzman, would you like to respond in 30 seconds?
No.
Thank you. We now come to the portion of the program where each of the candidates will give their closing statements. Each of them will have two minutes for a closing statement. We will begin with Mr. Cornet. If you can please give your statement in two minutes.
Thank you. I would like to start by recognizing a couple folks in the crowd. I've got a whole bunch of supporters here. Thank you all for being here. The most important one is my wife Molly Alshire, who's here with her parents, Skip and Marika. Thank you for being here today. They're sitting with my friend, Staff Sergeant Bob Black. Now, I'm really glad Sergeant Black is here today because he's one of the many thousands of Oregon troops that came home from Iraq. He got home and saw his family for the first time in 10 months, just last night. So thanks for your service, and thanks for being here today. Now, when Sergeant Black goes to the real world, he has a job, but far too many of his fellow soldiers are returning to have no jobs, adding to the unemployment rolls that are already high in Portland. We can't have the strong economy we need when Portlanders, guard troops, and others don't have jobs. You know, we can't have the safe neighborhoods we need when kids can't walk to school, and the sidewalks are lined with those suffering from mental illness. And we can't trust that City Hall is suddenly going to begin to be wiser with tax and rate dollars when you have the same cast of characters there. How can we change it? Well, you can't keep electing the same people to City Hall and expect anything to be different. If you elect me, you'll elect somebody with a tireless work ethic who will focus on the issues that matter to average, everyday struggling Portlanders so we can move Portland forward. I would love to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saltzman, a two-minute closing statement, please.
Well, once again, I'd like to thank the City Club and my opponents, those up on the stage and those who are in the audience, for being here. If good citizens are the riches of a city, the City Club surely is our treasure chest. Over the course of the debate, you've seen that a lot of the work I do represents nuts and bolts work, what makes the city work. A lot of it isn't glamorous, but I think it's important to have someone in council that pays attention to those nuts and bolts. And while I do keep a sharp eye on the bottom line, I also try to keep my eyes on the horizon. That is what I did when I started the Office of Sustainable Development. At the time, as I said, some people criticized it as some sort of a pet project. Today, it is a pillar of our economic development strategy that is already reaping rewards like Solar World. The Portland Children's Levy is another example of keeping an eye on the future and is now acknowledged nationally as an example of something Portland does right. And I do want to highlight another issue that I will be focusing on if I have the honor of continuing as your city commissioner, and that's human trafficking. And let me be clear about what I mean about human, the clinical term, human trafficking. It means a 13-year-old girl that flees from a home of violence, neglect, or drug abuse, and whose open arms are waiting for her? A pimp who within hours will have her on the street, working the streets. Now, you may not have been aware that Portland is a national center for human trafficking. We are number two in the nation. We must do something about it, and you can be sure that I will. I've always seen part of my job as being a voice for those who have no voice. I ask for your support so I can continue to be that voice and continue to be a strong, independent leader who cares, understands the needs of Portland's families, and keeps a sharp eye on the bottom line. I ask for your support on May 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Volm, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you, and thank you for hosting all of us today and all of my fellow City Club members. Thanks for listening. It's very important that you're engaged in your government because it makes it so much better. When I started at this city 20 years ago, we lauded ourselves on the most open, accessible, and transparent government in the United States. I don't know what's happened, but there are a lot of back-room deals and decisions being made before any commissioner steps into the council chambers. And as you testify, their decision is already made. My promise to you is that I will continue to call on bringing citizens back into City Hall and bringing them back to the decision table. Too many times, we've been surprised by sewer funds being raided for the use for bike projects, pet projects, bicycles, and too many times, we've seen city council members make decisions about your money that don't have anything to do with the city itself. The city is simple: municipal services, police, fire, transportation, parks, planning, housing. And when we take our eye off that ball and go after something else that we want to play with, we are failing our citizens. We have E. coli in the water, we have police marching on City Hall, and now we have worries about how we're going to replace sewer pipes that are deteriorating because that money was used for something else. I care about this city, and I care about the work that we do, and I care about the staff that does this work. No one's mentioned the hard-working employees at the city of Portland, and they put themselves out there on the line to deliver those services to you, and I care about them deeply. And I'm about bringing Portland back to Portland, bringing it back to you. I ask you for your vote on May 18th, and let's keep Portland Portland. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all of you. That wraps up the forum for today, and as our president returns to the stage, let's give today's debaters a big round of applause.
Dan, we may need to steal your line about the treasure chest there. I want to thank, as we close, our TRU squad members, Briann Arnold, Jean Hart, and Leslie Moorhead, our timekeeper Elaine McCall, a special thank you to our moderator Corleen Kraft, and of course, our greatest appreciation to our debaters, Jessie Cornet, Dan Saltzman, and Mary Volm. Tune in next week for the Democratic primary gubernatorial debate. We're adjourned.